LP 25-04 and Z 2502-001, an annexation and original zoning request from County RS40, residential single family to City PUD, planned unit development with associated unified development plan for the properties identified as 5136 Carlson Dairy Road and 4305 and 4307 Hamburg Mill Road, generally described as south of Hamburg Mill Road and north of Carlson Dairy Road, 78.512 acres. And Mr. Carter?
Thank you Chair Maggie. This is the zoning map of the subject property showing that the subject property contains approximately 78.512 acres and is located south of Hamburg Mill Road and north of Carlson Dairy Road. This is an annexation and an original zoning request from County RS40 to City Planned Unit Development. And in conjunction with that rezoning or original zoning request, the Planning and Zoning Commission will also be voting on the Unified Development Plan. North of this request is zone Summerfield RS for residential, single family, Summerfield AG for agricultural. East of the request is zone Summerfield RS, Summerfield AG, Summerfield OI for office and institutional, and City of Greensboro PNR for parkland and natural resources. South of the request is zoned City of Greensboro PNR and Summerfield RS. West of the rezoning request is zone Summerfield RS, Summerfield CZ OSR for conditional zoning, open space residential. This is the aerial map of the subject property showing that it contains single-family dwellings, agricultural uses and undeveloped land. North and west of the request contain single-family dwellings and undeveloped land. East of the request contains agricultural land, single-family dwellings and Lake Higgins and undeveloped land. South of the request contains single-family dwellings and undeveloped land, and west of the request contains single-family dwellings. This image shows the northern portion of the subject properties as seen from Hamburg Mill Road. This image shows the southern portion of the subject property as seen from Carlson Dairy Road. This image shows undeveloped land that's located north of the request on Hamburg Mill Road, zoned Summerfield RS. And these are examples of single-family dwellings located north of the request on Four Oaks Court, zoned Summerfield RS. This is an example of the single-family dwellings located north of the request on Hamburg Mill Road, also zoned Summerfield RS. This is a single-family dwelling located northeast of the request, zoned Summerfield RS. And at the end of this driveway is a single-family dwelling and agricultural use, and this is located east of the request, zoned Summerfield AG. This image shows the parkland and natural resource area that is located southeast of the request on Carlson Dairy Road. It is zoned Summerfield OI. This image shows examples of single-family dwellings located south of the request on Carlson Dairy Road, zoned Summerfield RS. This single-family dwelling is also located on Carlson Dairy Road. It is zoned Summerfield AG. It is located southwest of the request. These single-family dwellings are located west of the request, zoned Summerfield RS. And this, these are common elements located west of the request, located on Hamburg Mill Road, zoned Summerfield CZ OSR. This is another single-family dwelling located west of the request, zoned Summerfield RS. This view is facing east on Hamburg Mill Road. The subject property is on the right. And this is facing west on Hamburg Mill Road. The subject property is on the left. This view is facing northwest on Carlson Dairy Road. The subject property is on the right. This view is facing southeast on Carlson Dairy Road. The subject property is on the left. These are the, or this is the condition that was proposed by the applicant. Today the applicant requested to remove one of the permitted uses. You'll notice at the bottom of the screen that nightclubs has been removed, so only bars and brewpubs would be permitted and nightclubs would not. I need the Planning and Zoning Commission to accept that change.
Okay, so can we make, I'd like to make a motion to remove the nightclubs from this proposed conditions.
Mary Skeens, I move to accept the deletion of nightclubs under the condition...
Commissioner Gilmer, say it.
Thank you Ms. Skeens and Mr. Gilmer. And now we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your arm and saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you Chair Maggie. In recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 comprehensive plan currently designates the subject property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed original zoning request supports the comprehensive plans filling in our framework big idea to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time, and the creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. The PUD zoning district encourages innovation by allowing flexibility in permitted uses, design, and layout requirements in accordance with the Unified Development Plan. The proposed PUD as conditioned accommodates a mix of residential housing types and complementary non-residential uses that are compatible with the existing uses in the surrounding area. The request also introduces traditional neighborhood design elements while preserving open space. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower-density residential uses on adjacent properties. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions yet? All right. If the applicant would come forward, you have up to 10 minutes. Please give your name and address. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Good evening. I'm Tom Tarrell, 230 North Elm Street in Greensboro. I'm going to immediately turn the podium over to Victor Dover, whose name and whose projects are known all over the world. Mr. Dover?
Thanks Tom. Thank you Madam Chair. My name is Victor Dover. I'm a town planner and urban designer with Dover Colan Partners, 1571 Sunset Drive in Coral Gables. First, where is Christopher Village? The darker green color on your map shows the city limits today of the city of Greensboro, and the Christopher tract is located just a bit north and east of the airport on the north side of Lake Higgins. It's the southern tier of the properties that were deannexed from Summerfield last year. The city of Greensboro wraps around it from the south and the east and the north. The Unified Development Plan pack application materials include these engineering-like drawings which we are required to do, which can be a little hard to visualize. So I thought I'd show you a little more about what's envisioned. First, let's look at an aerial photograph showing in this the uphill fields, the forested areas, and the long pasture along Carlson Dairy Road. The site altogether is just under 80 acres. One of the delightful things today when you go out there and when you come along Carlson Dairy Road is that long pasture. And so we thought, what if, what if we could develop on part of the tract but save the rest? What if we could fold up the development that would otherwise fill up that nice flat site like that pasture and then move it in an artful way behind the trees on the forest on the left and keep this beautiful long view open? So that's what we did. This view shows the compact, complete, connected village placed to the center of the space between the two roads, Carlson Dairy Road and Hamburg Mill Road, behind the trees, and you can see the long pasture in the foreground at the bottom left. Now, at the bottom center of this illustrative plan, you can see that same long pasture and the forest and then the village located to the north of it. The plan is to interconnect our little network of new walkable streets to the surrounding streets along two places, along Carlson Dairy Road, and at one place on Hamburg Mill Road. And then we also envisioned a small driveway at the western end along Carlson Dairy Road and a narrow emergency access entrance at the western end along Hamburg Mill Road. That could also serve, if possible, as a construction entrance. So the idea of all that is to have multiple points of connection so that not all the trips have to come to the same place at the same time. Your package also includes descriptions of the kinds of walkable tree-lined streets that are envisioned. These are based on Greensboro standards. We started with Greensboro's TN standards as the base and then did our customizing from there. But the idea is to create slow, safe, sane, beautiful streets. The licensed engineers at Kittleson Associates studied a whole series of the surrounding intersections to see if traffic would be adversely affected by the proposed development after it was built. They found no significant impact. This is pretty important. Lead engineer Wade Walker, Wade just waved your arm so they know who you are, is here to answer any questions you may have about that. A paramount idea is to protect the watershed. So the best ways to do that are to pull the development up onto the higher ground away from the lake, and then to maximize the undisturbed area and to minimize the built-upon area and to minimize the impervious surfaces that come from making roads too wide or parking lots too big. So the regulations the city has already adopted point the way. Our Unified Development Plan has these explicit calculations that show exactly how the proposed development complies. And so when you zoom in on that stuff, you can see, for example, your package has these notes on watershed protection measures. This includes the promises to exceed the minimum amount of undisturbed land and include additional open space that would otherwise not be required. Now, the same is true for the stream buffers. These are also marked on the maps, but these will be remapped and rechecked and recertified again before the issuance of any building permits. So bottom line on that, the development will comply with all of the regulations. It will meet or exceed all the requirements at the city, county, state, and federal level. Let's look at some of the other key ideas. This building in a compact way is important because it lets us have room to connect the trail system across the property. The founders of the village here envision rotating the homes on their lots to face the trail with their front porches, not their backsides. This little view of the Christopher Pond shows that idea. When we make the homes a little smaller and we wind them a little closer together and we move the cars to the rear lane, then the fronts of the houses and cottages can face the trail like this. Another key idea is that while the Christopher Village will have primarily places to live and perhaps work from home, it will also include a modest amount of other things to walk to, like a coffee shop and civic life. So we, this is a question we often get, how much of that are you talking about doing? You've probably read that we propose 18,000 square feet of civic and commercial shopfront sorts of uses. I thought it would be useful to talk about just how much is that really? For example, here, you could be marked up a photo from somewhere else of a traditional neighborhood center. This is to show how big things are. That 8,000 square feet, for example, is only three or four storefronts. It's mouth the size of a coffee shop, a leasing office, a small yoga studio, maybe a sandwich place. It's the equivalent in square footage of about two 7-Elevens, just to give you an idea how modest that proposal is. Now, just to clarify something else that's already come up, some of you may know the neighborhood we designed in Oklahoma City called the Wheeler District. It has this little craft brewery called the Big Friendly, which is quickly become a beloved place in the neighborhood. So we thought, well, let's include a craft brewery here in the list of permitted uses. And the city, being very helpful, said their regulatory definition doesn't call it a craft brewery, calls it a brewpub. So we said, okay. We started with craft brewery, but we'll call it a brewpub. Then we learned that the city's official category is actually named bar, nightclub, and brewpub. And that's why that phrase was included in the application for the permitted uses. But let me be very clear, we are not proposing to have a nightclub. It would be fine with us that your recommendation is to strike that word. So, no nightclub. Last but not least of the key ideas here is the widest possible variety of housing. That is the big point. And of course, there will be some large houses as if it's your growing prosperity as a community. We also think that in addition to the large houses, we should have a number of other types of homes, like the ones that would welcome smaller households, like empty nesters and young people, cottages set within cottage courts, sometimes called pocket neighborhoods. That should seem familiar since you all have seen this before in historic Fisher Park. We'll also have, well, the last, I think, one really cool place to do one of those pocket neighborhoods is seen here on the north and west at the end of the long pasture where they will share that commons created by preserving the long pasture. So we'll also have some attached clustered houses and live-work units. These are meant to be grouped around mid-block passages and courtyards. And that should be familiar as well. You might recognize the row houses on the left of our rendering. We're inspired by the row houses at Old Salem. We'll have one, count them, one garden-style apartment building. We want to do this one at Christopher as a prototype for a better type of garden apartment building so we can use those in future villages at Summerfield Farms. So I have 24 units at the most. We also propose to have the mansion apartment house type, which has four to eight units on the lot, looks like a big house. And then the last of the types I'll show is accessory dwelling units. You'll recognize the ADUs from any historic neighborhoods around here. Sometimes they're called in-laws quarters or granny flats, Fonzie flats, Fonzie rented one from the Cunningham's in Happy Days. Remember that? They're a great way to reinforce affordability and security and keeping families together. I do want to mention that we looked over the comprehensive plan really quickly. And this approval is not just in keeping with the adopted comprehensive plan overall, but actively promotes specific goals and objectives that have been established by the plan. And it'll also help with the new initiatives like the Road to 10,000, seeking to get more dwelling units by 2030. That's our summary and look forward to all the questions you may have.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions at this point? Okay. So next, those wishing to speak in opposition, you have a total as a group, 10 minutes.
Good evening. Cheryl MacIver, 404 West McCastle Drive. What a beautiful project. However, I do think that it is missing the mark when it comes to offering residents of all walks of life affordable housing. According to the Road to 10,000, this is to have affordable housing. I understand there's supposed to be, let's see, 164 single-family homes, 48 townhomes, and 54 multifamily. My suggestion would be to flip this around. 164 multifamily units, 48 single-family, and then the remaining in townhomes. And with that being said, 15% to 20% of that should be allocated to affordable housing. I think we all know that affordable housing is needed in Greensboro. And considering that southeast Greensboro has now come to about 1,000 units in District 1, we would love to see affordable housing spread in other areas as well. Any questions? And in the 2040 plan, they specifically read that it meets it by offering residents of all walks of life affordable housing. I didn't hear that in this proposal. So I think that particular phrase does not lend itself to this particular project, however beautiful it does sound. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. MacIver. If the, if those in opposition would line up over here on the side, and we can continue with the next person who would like to speak in opposition. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Priscilla Olenek, 3100 Pleasant Ridge Road in Summerfield. I'm sure you all know how long and contentious this has been for us. I would like to thank Guilford County Planning and Zoning. They gave very careful consideration in trying to meet compatibility within the surrounding areas in the town of Summerfield. We are very much appreciative of that. They had multiple meetings, had to go back and forth trying to get it as compatible as they could. So we're very appreciative for them for that, and we hope that you all will give us the same consideration. Just because this land was removed from Summerfield jurisdiction doesn't eliminate the impact to Summerfield residents. As you saw in the presentation, all the surrounding uses are RS40 or AG. Summerfield is generally considered low-density. And I appreciate you all removing the nightclubs because that is just absolutely non-congruent with the town of Summerfield. But for having such a small percentage of commercial, it seems interesting to me that the craft distillery and the brewpub is their main focus. Summerfield is a family-oriented town. We pride ourselves on that. It's not congruent with the single-family residential surrounding that. The other concern is the Tier 3 watershed. I saw briefly on the presentation that 30% was to be the built-upon area. Maybe I was looking at that incorrectly, but you have a lot of impervious surfaces. You have driveways. You have a lot of rooftops. There's a lot going on there. Not sure how they will plan to mitigate that, but that should be interesting. The low-density built-upon area, and maybe I miscalculated this looking at your UDO, I'm not used to looking, excuse me, your LDO. It says built-upon area 12%. As you see around, the single-family housing adjacent is a, nothing is congruent with this. It's single-family RS40, one unit per acre AG. To us, this is, feels like a little bit of a spot zoning, that you're placing this higher-intensity use in the middle of all the surrounding single-family uses. I would just like to point out that the land use compatibility is not compatible with the general area, general area of its surroundings. The PUD zoning also states that there will be no agriculture. I think it's interesting juxtaposition that the name of this development is Villages of Summerfield Farms. It's not in Summerfield, nor are they farming. This zoning does not offer continuity and scale, density, intensity with any adjacent uses. I thank you for your consideration and please go easy on us. Any little win that we can get in Summerfield is good for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address.
Heath Clay, 1100 Stallion Court, Summerfield. Honorable Greensboro Planning Board Chair and Members, I represent the Summerfield Town Council, and I have a letter that has been handed to you that I would like to also read for your consideration. On behalf of the town of Summerfield and its town council, we respectfully request consideration of the town's existing and proposed land uses in your decision to annex and assign zoning for Mr. Couch's properties into the city of Greensboro. As you are aware, the deannexation of the properties from the town of Summerfield has caused a great burden on the town from a planning perspective because the areas in which these properties are located are central to the town's corporate limits and its identity. As a result, any proposed development could have great implications and potential negative impacts on surrounding properties who reside in this town of Summerfield but were not given a voice in the legislature's decision to deannex these properties. Additionally, any incompatible zoning of these properties could have dire consequences for the town from a comprehensive planning perspective. Now currently, the surrounding land uses for Mr. Couch's properties are primarily low-density, single-family, residential, or low-intensity, neighborhood-oriented, commercial, and office uses. While we recognize that Mr. Couch likely wants to be served by water and sewer from the city, this does not negate the need to plan compatibility with the surrounding land uses, similar to the way that the Guilford County methodically determined land use compatibility for these properties when its planning board assigned initial zoning post-deannexation using Summerfield's previous zoning districts as a guide. We humbly request a similar process and consideration from Greensboro. We would be happy to sit down with the city, perhaps at a workshop, to discuss our concerns and to try to come to a amenable conclusion regarding the use of these properties. Now, if this is not possible, they would, we would ask that the city zone Mr. Couch's properties with restrictions on lighting to be compliant with the town's dark-skY compliant lighting ordinance, as well as restrictions on residential density to no more than two units per acre. Consideration also for traffic and transportation improvements for any commercial development, and buffering and landscaping to protect the investment and the interests of surrounding residential and agricultural property owners. We feel these are reasonable and in the interest of the public because this would be more compatible with the adopted land use plan as well as Guilford County future land use plan, both of which limit commercial activity and intensity, as well as requesting residential compatibility with existing rural residential uses. I personally ask that you delay today's vote until you have a chance to fully consider the request that the council is making. We just recently found out about this annexation request, and I have no doubt that we can work together as close neighbors to have a beneficial outcome for Greensboro, for the developer, and for Summerfield. I thank you for your time and your consideration in this very important matter.
Thank you, Mr. Clay.
Any questions?
Any, any additional people that want to speak in opposition? We have a minute and 22 seconds. Are there any online? Could we check?
Chair Maggie, there are not.
Thank you so much. We have a minute and 22 seconds if someone else would like to speak in opposition. Okay, all right. Well, then we'll proceed with the rebuttal time. The applicant will have up to five minutes.
Very briefly, Mr. Couch tried for eight years to work with Summerfield. It's eight long years. They ultimately passed a text amendment that would allow some density, but four of the five council members promised the voters that they...
Could you, excuse me, Mr. Tarrell, can you get the microphone a little bit closer? We're having trouble hearing you.
Is that better?
How is that? Is it better? Thank you. Thank, maybe... Oh, good. Thank you.
Mr. Couch tried for eight years to work with Summerfield. Ultimately, they passed a text amendment saying that they would have, in theory, a district that he could apply to be a part of, but then four of the five council members promised so many times on social media they would never vote to rezone him into that district. Four of the five council members promised, it's all over social media, they would never allow water and sewer into that district. There was never going to be a way it could happen. When they passed the new UDO the same day, they also imposed a 3,000-foot, no-build scenic corridor in three locations. The roads surrounding Mr. Couch's property, it was vindictive. It was vindictive. It was the type of behavior that in my 40 years I've never seen before. The UDO, they say, allows quadruplexes. We're allowing density in this new district. But if you read all of the provisions, it takes 10 acres for that one quadruplex. It takes 10 acres. I would defy anybody, challenge anybody, to show me how you could build one quadruplex in that UDO in anything less than 10 acres. Summerfield had its chance to work with Mr. Couch, and they forfeited it. They now want you to give them a seat at the table. I would like to say they had a chance. Would you add anything to that?
Well, with that, there was one item brought up about dark-skies compliance, and certainly our intention to use downcast fixtures in keeping with the standards of the International Dark Sky Association. So that detail is on our minds and built in.
Thank you. Now we'll have anybody else that wants to speak in opposition? That's... Okay, in favor of, I'm sorry. In favor of, do we have anybody else who would like to speak in favor of? Oh, please come to the podium.
Gail Dunham, 5805 Snow Hill Drive. Thank you very much. I have been watching your meetings as it wins first started. You've all done a tremendous job. You're very thorough. I especially like that you do not have apartment built... You will not approve apartment buildings unless commercial water and sewer are already in place. I don't think it's necessary to work with the town of Summerfield. They don't have a feel for the continuity of zoning. They're building this massive water tower in the middle of a residential area to rely on combingling existing wells, which is... I'm very much opposed to that. And the UDO was put through with no public hearing. Now they want to completely redo the comp plan by their... Whatever they want. The council does not work with the citizens of Summerfield. So I don't think that the idea that you could work with them... They're definitely not representing the citizens. You're working at a much higher professional level. It's noticed. I really appreciate, thank you very, very much because you're all giving your time to do this.
Thank you so much. Now we will... Anyone else speaking in favor? Okay. Now we will hear rebuttals in opposition, and we will share up to five minutes. Please come to the podium, state your name and address. Okay, we have someone coming.
Jonathan Hamilton, 6204 Riada Drive in Summerfield. I'll just say in response to Attorney Terrell's comments, he is an attorney, and he has been paid to work for David Couch, I assume. So a lot of the work he has done, he has been paid to do it. And I'm not certain if he's being paid to be here tonight, but I'd guess that he has been. I noticed that the way he said it was that Summerfield is a town... We had a chance to work with the developer. First of all, I think that's a really bad way to say it. The developer should have a chance to work with the people of Summerfield, but that's not what happened. Very disappointed that things have come out to be this way. But I'm going to be short because I think that Councilman Clay... And again, I'm actually on the council of Summerfield. But I think Councilman Clay did an excellent job voicing our concerns about the specific issues that are in there. But I will ask that you don't rush in anything. I think you heard them say eight years. So whatever it is that they proposed over eight years apparently wasn't in harmony with what the people wanted there. And for whatever reason, the General Assembly... And I spoke to a lot of those folks at the General Assembly, and it was not a loved bill. The bill was passed deannexing that land because there were a lot of other things in it. And representatives from around here spoke out against it. But in the end, it passed because people wanted some of the other things, the other provisions that were in that bill. But I will ask that you don't rush in anything. And to, if you need to, please delay it to make sure that it's done right, keep it in harmony with the area around it, and I would appreciate that. And I think the people of Summerfield would very much appreciate that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Anyone else wanting to speak in opposition? We have three minutes, 17 seconds. I think someone is coming forward. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Maria Adams, and I live at 5999 Morganshire Drive in Summerfield. And I wanted to thank our Councilmen Heath Clay and Councilman John Hamilton that just spoke here a moment ago, asking this committee to work with Summerfield and work with the council in Summerfield. I'm a resident. I've lived in Summerfield for 15 years. And when... And excuse me if I don't use the right terminology. But when proposals came up for Mr. Couch's property and his development ideas, there were over 300, 400 residents that would come to the town council meetings. And the last one that I attended regarding this matter, over nearly 100 people spoke. 80% of them were in opposition of the proposed development. And it wasn't the entire development they were in opposition of. It was the high density. It was the apartments. So the town has actually done a lot to try to accommodate Mr. Couch and the developer, but they want it bigger and more. And so the residents spoke, and we elected our town council. We didn't elect a developer. And the council listened to the residents. And so I agree with Councilman Clay that it would be great if we could find a way to work together and have it be a win-win for everyone. So thank you. And also wanted to say, since I have a couple more minutes, or just a little bit more time, we have a very professional group of ladies and gentlemen on our town council. We have an educator, we have an attorney, we have a businessman, we have a business owner, we have a farmer. And for one of our citizens to say that our council is unprofessional, I just find that appalling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. We do have an additional bit of time if there's anyone else that would like to speak in opposition. Oh, one more person coming. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Spencer. I live at 8305 North Scamper Gray Court in Summerfield. Just listening to the other speakers, I made a few notes to myself. And the idea that this neighborhood doesn't meet Summerfield's identity is really kind of the idea. Because Summerfield's identity is about manicured berms along roads instead of open pastures. True open space preservation takes the place of that typical identity. Clustered homes suitable for first and last homes take the place of large-lot subdivisions that are going to house a very limited, excuse me, walk of life. The median home price in Summerfield was in December $640,000. So this project, and as beautiful as it is and well-designed as it is, will improve the atmosphere of Summerfield, its environment, its community, and the people that can live in it.
Thank you very much. Okay. So without further ado, we will... I'd like to hear if there's any comments from the commissioners. Well, let's close the public hearing first. We'll close the public hearing.
Chair Maggott, if I may, before you all move on to deliberation, just a couple quick words. Obviously, we heard a fair bit about different individuals, different entities involved in the broader history here and some history that predates the state legislative action that would make this parcel available for annexation to the city of Greensboro. I just want to re-center the board's attention before we move on to the deliberation to drive home. We're here to decide land use tonight. The question before you all is really, does this application open the door to land use? Is there appropriate in this place at this time? And that's really where we're at this evening, so.
And just a point of clarity, the legislative deannexation that occurred has nothing to do with what we're considering here. Is that correct? That has nothing to do with land use and this being annexed?
Yeah, I mean, it's contextually germane insofar as it opened the door to this application. But beyond that, no, it has no bearing.
Thank you so much for the clarity on that.
An additional clarification. I think what you were saying was that there were a lot of references to Summerfield, but what we have here is a piece of property that wants to be annexed into Greensboro, so we need to apply development standards as it relates to Greensboro and our land development ordinance. Is that...
Well said, and to do so, to make a recommendation to council ultimately one direction or the other.
And if I may, just, Commissioner Nichols, to that point, what, if any, obligation do we as a commission have to interact with or try to cooperate with Summerfield?
So I should say, Commissioner Nichols, from a standpoint of... I think I heard, let's have a meeting at one point in that. That is a conversation that I can certainly, you know, kick up the chain in the city attorney's office and make sure that managers and planning department are well aware of that. But that really isn't for the commission. You know, I think that the question before you is, do you feel comfortable proceeding to make a recommendation one direction or the other? Because this is ultimately going to go to council either way. And, you know, the time between now and then could let us respond to that inquiry from folks in Summerfield, so.
Madam Chairman, I have a question as well. So just to clarify, we are to use our City of Greensboro 2040 Comprehensive Plan as we're thinking about this particular process on tonight?
Commissioner Downing, as always, your conversation and analysis of this situation should be grounded in that plan and the factors that are at play and the reasonableness statements that you all read out when you make a zoning motion.
All right, thank you for clarifying.
That's your guide rails.
Thank you, Mr. Downing. Mr. Kirkman, do you want to make any comment before we close the public hearing?
Just to add on to what Attorney DeCharmagne also keep in mind that we're talking about if they're annexed into the city. So it's Greensboro standards through the land development ordinance that would also be applied. Anything that's not addressed in the Unified Development Plan, obviously they're very prescriptive in the Unified Development Plan, but if there are other things that are not covered in that plan, then we default to our Greensboro Land Development Ordinance. One thing I heard tonight about lighting, just want to clarify that our standards say that if you have lighting above a certain amount of lumen, basically they have to have screens to keep that light pointed down. And the standard is that you can't have any ambient lighting beyond one-foot candle at either the street or adjacent residential property lines. That's a standard in the Land Development Ordinance. Therefore, would not have had to been addressed in the application. I can answer your questions.
Yes. Okay, all right. Yes.
Yes, I got a question for the attorney for the developer. You indicated that you...
Wait, did you come up in the... Thank you.
Yes. You indicated you was dealing with the city of Summerfield for about eight years. During that conversation in eight years, was the primary concern density? That's why you guys couldn't agree on a lot of stuff?
I think that the speaker told you what the primary concern was. It was apartments. And if we played for you the quotes that we have on tape that were made at many public hearings, I think you would know what the real objection was.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to close the public hearing. And we'll open this to discussion. Does anyone wish to speak? Okay. Thank you.
We were still receiving emails on this case up until about 4:30 this afternoon. And I want to say that the ones we got today were very, very pertinent to the situation. And they were from different conservation groups who were really commenting about what a great development this was as it relates to permanently protects our open spaces. Unlike traditional housing, this development uses clustering that will protect our open spaces. In addition, the comments were this plan protects rural vistas. And that made me think about, well, this works. This is something that they've considered, all the aspects of water conservation, land conservation. So I really feel there was a lot of time, effort, and thought given to this plan. And as it relates to Greensboro, it protects the lakes. It gives you these big, open vistas. I think it's a great plan.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Yeah, I also have... We have all of your emails, the good emails and the... Well, the ones that were in favor and the ones that were not in favor. But we respect the citizens of Summerfield. You're very important to us. We're neighbors. But I heard the sentiments on tonight. This seems to be well-intentional and strategic as far as how this plan has been brought about. Now, I know it's been eight years, and over those eight years paradigms have shifted, and our sentiments have shifted. And I know that lots of planning went into place. There were eight ideas, key ideas, that I counted on tonight. And from every single slide, it was very detailed. It thought about the environmental impact, the neighborhoods, the lighting, all of those areas. I even likened this to outskirts of Chapel Hill, Farrington Village, and other areas that are very robust, very beautiful, and very intentional. And I can see this being very impactful 40, 50 years from now in a very good space for the historic preservation. I am supporting this on tonight because it seems to me that, yes, conversations have been had, good and bad, but this is good progress. And this good progress is good for the city of Greensboro, and we welcome it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Downing. Would any other comments first?
One more comment from my perspective.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nichols.
I concur with everything Commissioner Downing said. I think that this development has the potential to become a model across the country for what good looks like. This is walkable. It's a community that will connect to people. It is a... It's interesting to me that, you know, some of the opposition was, well, it's not affordable. And then other opposition was, well, it's not enough like Summerfield. Well, if you're going to be affordable, it's going to be very dense. And if it's going to be like Summerfield, it's going to be not very dense. But this, I think, has tremendous streetscapes that balance the need for more units of housing, which we all know it's in a place where the housing is desperately needed and is going to be needed even more as things at the airport continue to develop. So change is never easy, but this is an excellent project, and I strongly support it.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
Madam Chairman, thank you. I will be supporting the project also. I think it was well-thought-out. I think it was great. It was presented great. I think that it follows the Comprehensive Plan. I think we got a housing shortage. As you know, our mayor said we need 10,000 houses in the next 10 years, five years, or whatever it was. But anyway, I think the project is great, and I agree with you, sir. I think it is a model for preserving land and controversy in the future. So I will be supportive. I think it was a great presentation. I think it was a great presentation too, sir. Great, thanks.
Ms. Glass.
I have mixed feelings about this particular project. I certainly hear all of the citizens' concerns and the comments that were made. I absolutely agree that this was a great presentation. But I understand all of the historical background about this project. Again, I understand the citizens' concerns, but I think those, your concerns and issues will have to be placed with another body. We are the zoning commission and we're required, as we took an oath before we begin this meeting, to decide zoning issues. We cannot decide legislative issues. We cannot decide other issues that I'm sure you as the citizens of Summerfield are not happy about. There are other avenues, again, as I said, to express your issues and your concerns. It doesn't stop with this commission whether we approve or deny, because most likely from what I'm, I'm hearing from my colleagues, that this is probably going to be approved by this commission. It will probably go to, well, it will go to city council. But again, your issues and concerns shouldn't stop there if you want to continue expressing your comments about this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glass.
I appreciate all the comments that have been made this evening. I think in a historic sense, this brings us back to the possibility of a community for something that some of us long for, is to live closely with our neighbors in a community where we can do some, enjoy some local businesses as well as each other's company. I think it's futuristic in the design that it's preserving vistas. It is a sense of protecting the water. The fact that the front porches are oriented toward the trail and the walking and the neighborliness of it is a very striking feature to me. So that we're looking at the future, not a time when we're all in our vehicles, but a time when we can come back together. So I see it both as past and future. I, I think it's a great use of the amount of land and a very considerate use for the way it is designed, so I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Anyone else?
I'd just like to say that I agree with all your comments. It's, it's, it reminds me of South Side, which we developed in 1995, long time ago, with commercial underneath and housing above and all of these different quirky types of buildings and so forth. This to me seems to be the new South Side, so I'll be voting in favor of this.
All right, now I'd like to hear a motion.
Commissioner Keith Peterson, recommend annexation, P L P.
Wait, wait, before we do that, I'm sorry, forgot one thing. Thank you. So first, we have to vote on the U D P. And there is some new wording on the U D P that, that we have to...
We can kind of work our way through if you would like, yes. We do have some updated information on the Unified Development Plan that was presented to the commission with that. Certainly you can start with the annexation that brings it into the city's jurisdiction, then the plan year development zoning, and then the Unified Development Plan is the standards that go with the, so I would just kind of do it in sequence and then we can address that U D P.
So annex, zoning, and then U D P.
Yes, right. We'll talk about that because council's got another action tomorrow night relative to some of their issues.
Chair Maggie.
Yes.
I had wanted to say something, but I wasn't able to get in with the discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, please speak.
It's very brief because I had a list of things, but everybody's covered all of that. But, and I appreciate that. But I do want to say that I think that this is an example of very responsible growth. We need to have responsible growth and sustainable growth and, and everyone has, has been talking about that from the planning department. And so I am very pleased to see this kind of a proposal, which as others have said, I think will become a model for others. And I also think that it's designed as a community, as has already been said. So I think it's a growth, you know, in terms of a new development, but it's kind of a development of the community as well as of a project. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And, and also the appeal of it to someone who's aging in place or young people, there's a lot of opportunity here. So first, we need an annexation.
Annexation, good. This Commissioner Keith Peterson, item P L P 25 dash 04, 5137 Carlson Dairy Road and 4305 and 4307 Hamburg Mill Road, I recommend annexation.
Sandra O'Connor, second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson and Ms. O'Connor. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that passes nine to zero. And now we need a zoning request, please.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion regarding to agenda item Z 25 02 001, 5136 Carlson Dairy Road and 4305 and 4307 Hamburg Mill Road. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the properties at 5136 Carlson Dairy Road and 4305 and 4307 Hamburg Mill Road from county R S 40 residential single family to city P U D planned unit development to be consistent with the adopted G S O 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action to be reasonable, the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. Number one, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Number two, the proposed city P U D zoning, PUD, zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. Number three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the city. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community and approval is in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Downing.
Commissioner Gilmer, second.
Thank you, Mr. Downing, Mr. Gilmer. So now we will vote by raising your hand, all those in favor and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that passes nine to zero. Now, Mr. Carter, about the U D P.
Thank you. The U D P is made up of four sheets, which we will go through, actually, you, you guys have already been presented that, so hopefully you had an opportunity to, to take a look at it. The U D P, if you decide to, you've recommended approval of the original zoning and recommending approval of the Unified Development Plan, please make that conditional approval based on approval of, of item H one on city council's agenda tomorrow night.
H eleven.
I'm sorry, H eleven, two ones. H eleven on council's agenda tomorrow night. That is a text amendment that you saw last month that allowed flexibility in the Unified Development Plan standards.
Thank you. I'd just like to, we, we pass, we annexed it and we've done the zoning and I didn't read that this constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to the public hearing at Tuesday, March 18, 2025 city council meeting now.
Yes, ma'am. So now the floor is open for a recommendation or a, a motion to approve conditionally the Unified Development Plan.
Commissioner Keith Peterson, I recommend approval for the conditions on the Unified Development Plan, H dash 11, text amendment to Greensboro City Council.
Commissioner Gilmer, second.
Wait, wait, it's, I think it's oh four.
Yeah, let's just clarify, I think it's a little easier to say, you're going to recommend approval of the Unified Development Plan subject to council action on the 18th relative to standards in the plan year development district. I think that's probably the better way to make that motion if that is acceptable.
Thank you.
The meeting is tomorrow. Yes, you guys heard the text amendment last week, or last month, excuse me, about what those proposed changes are. It just hasn't been officially approved yet by council, yes.
Okay. So you, we need to reword this then. Okay. Would you, would you like to do it, Ms., can, can we, can we pass this on to Ms. Gaines for help? Okay.
All right, I move adoption of the U D P for 5136 Carlson Dairy, 4305 and 43...